I'd like to call the order of the Sparks City Council Meeting of April 22, 2013. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City manager Carey.
Here.
City attorney Adams.
Here.
And city clerk Gardner here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. You can all stand now for the invocation by Pastor Barb West of the Sparks Church of Nazarene.
Welcome Pastor.
Thank you Mayor. The Bible tells us that blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. And God's word also tells us that we are to pray for those that he's placed in authority over us. So would you bow your heads with me and we'll have a prayer. Our heavenly Father, how grateful we are that it was your idea that we have leaders and that you put Mayor Martini and this fine council together to lead us here in the city of Sparks. And so we call upon you to give them the wisdom that they need for all of the things that are on their agenda for this day. And we thank you for this great crowd who has come out to witness what is going on and those who will be petitioning and talking. And so Lord, as we pause to thank you for our city, we pray for its protection. We also pray that you would watch over each and every one of us and help us to do our part as we are a citizen and that we might be pleasing to you in all that we do and in all that we say. So today be pleased and honored with this council and the things that they will be discussing and deciding. We lift up the name of Jesus. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for those kind words Pastor. We appreciate it. Remain standing for the flag of the United States of America and the truly republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sounds good. Does it? Yeah. Claws don't get out of hand. Yeah. Okay, now we have comments from the public. First of all, I have Ronald McGee. Ron, you have three minutes. Don't forget. Don't abuse the time.
I want to apologize first. I'm a stand-up speaker. I don't hide behind nothing. I want to apologize. Last time I was here, I had received bad medicine from the VA. I was going into a coma, which I wound up going to the hospital later that night and spending 30 days missed my funeral by one day. So I'm recovering from that. So I got short-term memory damage, not long-term. So I remember everything long-term. So anyway, what I'm going to speak today is about my background, which I plan officially to run for mayor this next election, which the mayor knows already. But my background, I never applied for it, but I'm 100% disabled Vietnam vet due to I got hurt playing football for the Army. So we're going to be honest about that. But you get the same benefits and the license plate. So I'm retired CWA, 1813, 33 years union leader. I used to have 250 minorities work for me in the 80s, made $50,000 a year in 1980, a union job though. Okay, third, I'm talking about police actions, good and bad. I've had some, a couple of bad experiences. One very bad was Sergeant Alt, which I had a bad experience with five years ago and I had no, you know, I let it slide. But he lost his cool and I think he should lose his stripes. And I'll handle that with the chief. Lieutenant, and last story I'm going to tell you, see, I had a can right there. I went to Baldini's, I was going to the motocross so I got some gas. I went in there, there was a young kid, 23 years old, well a cowboy. I thought he was like a trucker, trucker, welder. Well, he was called a train hopper that go around the world. Well, him and his buddy, his buddy is real depressed because his girlfriend had just fell off the train back up the road at 55 miles an hour. So he thought he had to do a funeral for her. She lived. But anyway, I let him use my phone. Later they start calling me back and forth. She called my buddy on the phone because I'm driving and we can't believe she's a liar. Well, she said, can you come get us in COFAV? Well, she said, I'll pay you $40 gas. Well, that didn't happen. Her girlfriend did. Anyway, I backtracked and went back to see if they were still there at Baldini's. They were. To let them know that she was okay. So then the next step, Sparks PD comes. I think, because the bag is left there this morning, about $200 worth of stuff in it with dog food. Because most important was then with her little doll, who's pit bull, in this $200 bag, still there. So I figure Sparks PD rested him. If there was a bad officer, a good one would let him go. That's how it works. The chief knows about that. So I follow up this morning. I go find the bag, put all the stuff in the bag, go to the police department and Lieutenant Hawkins handled it really well. So, and Dave actually was the mediator between over in San Jose, 415 area code, back and forth. They asked me, do you know their names? I said, I don't know their names, but I called the gal changed and put her name and her boyfriend's name. She's leaving a message for him.
Ron, wrap it up.
So I handed it to Hawkins.
Ron.
I know.
Wrap it up. Well, if you know, then wrap it up.
No, I'm going to change the rule when I become mayor to five minutes so I can know.
Okay. It's not a problem. You can do that.
Nothing personal.
Thank you. Next, we have Don Young. You have three minutes, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members and others, Happy Earth Day. I would like to make two comments. One, I would like the city council to consider passing ordinance about decompression braking. When triple trailers come across the marina or across Interstate 80 on the marina side and they hit their brake brakes, it can go for the whole length of the marina. And it's impossible to talk. I think anywhere within the city limits, there should be no brake brakes allowed or decompression braking. The other item is that I'd like to see yellow zones painted around our neighborhood collection box delivery units. That's a fancy term for the gang boxes that some of us have to pick our mail up from. When cars are parked in front of them, you're forced to pretty much double park out in the street to pick up your mail. If the weather is inclement, it can be unpleasant. So it's just something I would like you to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don. Okay, moving along. Next is approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order or... Not looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve.
It's Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Number three item is to consideration and possible approval of minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting for April 8, 2013. Any omissions or deletions? Any corrections? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a correction.
Okay, come on up and give us your correction.
Don Young again. And I would like to note that on your minutes, item 6.4, the last paragraph, says that Councilmember Ratty voted yes and voted no. So there needs to be some change.
That sounds like her.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it.
So Madam Clerk, could you check that and make a proper correction to the minutes? Thank you.
Yeah, it's true.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Mr. Schmidt?
Motion approved as amended.
Of second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan to approve the minutes as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. So you voted yes that time.
I do occasionally.
Okay, good. Okay, let's move on to proclamations. We have a few to get through. So first is Autism Awareness Month. Someone here to accept this? RJ Leru from Newton Learning? Did I pronounce that right?
RJ Leru.
RJ Leru. Okay, RJ. All right, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Thank you for... How many people do you have here today?
I brought a couple of my students with me and some staff. So 10 students?
So if you're here with the autism folks, please raise your hand. Oh, great. Wonderful. Wonderful.
My name's Sean Karp. I'm the creator of Ask Sean web series.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
One of the nice ladies in the office.
Okay. City of Sparks proclamation, whereas autism affects all persons regardless of race, religion, socioeconomic status, or geography. And whereas autism affects not only the diagnosed individual, but the entire family and the community at large. And whereas one in 88 persons has been diagnosed on the autism spectrum. And whereas there is currently no identified cause or cure for autism, it is known that with proper education, training, and community living options, individuals with autism can lead distinguished, productive lives in their communities. And whereas the unemployment rate among autistic adults is extremely high despite their ability to be valuable employees if given the proper working conditions. And whereas the aims for Autism Awareness Month are to inform the general public about the global health crisis of autism, stress the importance of early diagnosis and early intervention, and to celebrate the unique talents and qualities of individuals on the autism spectrum. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 2013 Autism Awareness Month and urge all employees and residents to learn more about an autistic and what they can do to support and accept individuals on autism spectrum and their families.
Sorry for my hobbling. Two years ago, we came to you guys to open up a school here in Sparks and I would like to extend another thank you. In the last two years, we have served over 75 new students between our camp and our day school. We transitioned 10 kids back last year to their general population and we're back up to the numbers, same numbers again. The need for this, the awareness of this is still out there. It needs to be spread. So thank you Mayor. Thank you city of Sparks for everything you guys have done for this diagnosis for autism spectrum kids.
You bet. And thank you for, the Newton School does a great job. I know one of our employees has a child there that...
We try. We try. So thank you.
Exactly. So if you want to have the kids come up on stage, we can try to get a picture with them?
Yes. NLT student. Can you guys come on up, please? (inaudible)
Can you get us, Mayberry? Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thanks for coming. Okay, let's move on to 4.2 proclamation, National Bike Month and Bike to Work Week. I think Ms. Ratty is going to read this for us. She's the only one fit enough to ride a bicycle here, so.
Not true. Not true. Whereas the bicycle is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation, and there is a need to promote alternative forms of transportation such as walking and bicycling in order to reduce pollution, traffic congestion, America's dependence on fossil fuels, and improve the health and well-being of our citizens. And whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, to boost community spirit, to improve traffic safety, and to reduce pollution and congestion. And whereas millions will experience the joys of bicycling during the month of May through educational and safety programs, community events, or just getting out and going for a ride. And whereas the bike paths and trails of Washoe County attract thousands of bicyclists each year from around the region providing economic, health, and scenic benefits to all. And whereas these bicycling activities and attractions have great potential to have a positive impact on the city of Sparks economy and tourism industry and to stimulate economic development by making the region attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the out-of-doors and healthy lifestyles. And whereas May has been declared National Bike Month for the last 57 years and is so again in 2013, and April 29th to May 3rd has been declared National Air Quality Awareness Week. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2013 as National Bike Month and Bicycle Safety Month, the week of April 29th through May 3rd, 2013 as National Air Quality Awareness Week, and May 11th through the 17th, 2013 as Bike to Work, School, and Fun Week throughout Washoe County, and encourage all citizens to enjoy the benefits of cycling and recognize the importance of bicycle safety and be more aware of cyclists on our streets. (applause)
Just can't escape the help, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
That's your time, Julia.
Oh, Richard, sorry. Yeah.
Please give us your name for the record and have, say a few words, either one of you or both.
My name's Philip Ulliberi. I'm the Public Information Officer for the Washoe County School District and I'm joined today with Julie Hunter, who's one of our air quality specialists at the Washoe County Health District. We're very excited to be here today as part of a proclamation for Bike to Work Week, Bike to Work Month, and National Air Quality Awareness Week. You may remember that back in November, we opened a new campaign, a new brand for the health district called Keep It Clean, asking everybody to watch out for our air quality standards from November through April, March, end of March, actually. A thing to note there is that in January alone, we had over 12,500 hits on our website, rcleanair.com. Our Keep It Clean, Rack Them Up program is going to be starting with National Bike to Work and Bike to School Month, and we're calling on all schools in the area to really promote having the kids bike to school. And we're actually rolling out a $1,250 contest for the best decorated bike racks at schools and schools that have the most kids bike to school that day. So we're happy to accept the proclamation today and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both for being here. Do you want to say something?
Oh, no. I'm actually excited that we're working with Safe Frost to School too on the National Bike to School Day, which is where the contest is coming from. So we're happy to work with Officer Cloud and Safe Frost to School. So we're excited about that too.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is proclamation, Older Americans Month. Mr. Lawson. Yeah, you're not that old, but...
No, but I do get to serve on this committee. Whereas older adults in Sparks, Nevada, are the roots from which our community grows, they bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live. And whereas our society can be enhanced by older adults aging peacefully in their communities, and whereas older adults in Sparks should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and nation. And whereas Sparks can provide that recognition and respect by enriching the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain in their communities as active and engaged citizens, providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow seniors to foster and maintain connections within the community, and emphasizing the value of elders by publicly recognizing their contributions to the diversity, strength, and unity of our city. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 2013 as Older Americans Month.
Go ahead, Grady.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the support. I also want to thank you for your ongoing support of the Sparks Senior Center. That's a great partnership between the city and the county to make sure that programs are available to seniors. We have an event on May the 9th at the Sparks Senior Center, an ice cream social and movie. Invite you all to be there. A Barbershop Quartet as well. And of course, we have our opening ceremonies on May 1st. I know Councilman Lawson is going to be attending on your behalf. And we look forward, and Tracy Dominguez, head of Parks and Recreation, also will be attending. So we really look forward to that. And again, thank you for your participation in Older Americans Month.
Thanks, Grady. Thanks, Grady. Okay, the next proclamation is National Nursing Home Week, and Mr. Smith will read this. Someone here to accept this? Okay, go ahead and read it, Ron.
Okay. Whereas the citizens of Sparks now residing in nursing homes have contributed immeasurably to the heritage, success, and growth of our community, and nursing home residents of any age or ability are themselves living history and a precious resource. And whereas a supportive and caring environment such as Skilled Nursing Care Center provides enrichment for residents and families to continue growing, learning, and teaching in various ways. And whereas skilled nursing care centers of the American Health Association and the Nevada Healthcare Association are holding events in observance of Nursing Home Week guided by this year's national theme of Team Care, Everyone Pitches In. And whereas celebrating National Nursing Home Week is our opportunity to honor those who make our nation's skilled nursing care center special. Now therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim, excuse me, May 12th through the 18th, 2013, as National Nursing Home Week, and urge everyone in the community to visit their loved one, friend, or neighbor currently residing in a skilled nursing care center to show respect for all that they have given to the society and to us. Let no elderly or disabled person sit alone during this time to wonder if they are valued, appreciated, and loved. Visiting or volunteering your time in a local care facility is a testament to a community spirit, brings honor to our fathers, mothers, grandparents, and everyone in residence, and lifts the spirits of caregivers who value your involvement. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, next is proclamation for Arbor Day. Is someone here to accept this? How are you, sir?
Very well.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for the wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas Sparks is recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2013 as Arbor Day and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is David Howlett. I'm the Urban and Community Forestry Program Coordinator, the Nevada Division of Forestry. Bring greetings from the State Office in Carson City and our state forester, Pete Anderson. First of all, I have just a couple bits of news I'd like to share with you. I am the one in charge of signing off on the Tree City USA applications, and I'd like to report that Sparks has continued to be a Tree City USA for 2012. So that's seven years of growth and movement towards managing our urban forests. I'd like to congratulate the city on that. We also have the announcement, I'm not sure if you're all aware of it, the one public utility that actually grows in value are your trees. They increase in value, they add more value to your properties and property taxes. And one thing, when you start to begin to manage your urban forest, you need to know what you have. You have to take stock of what you have. And the city has taken that step this year in terms of conducting an urban tree inventory. Like I said, it's the first step you take towards pushing towards more active management. And I'd like to congratulate your Parks and Recreation Department for that continued support. I actually did approve your growth award. Arbor Day has, in addition to Tree City USA Growth Award for cities who've taken extra steps, extra measures to manage their urban resources, and the city of Sparks has done that and your award was approved. So the paperwork should be coming. It was done a little bit later than normal, but I just wanted to appreciate what the city's done for urban forests and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And this is one of the stipulations that we have to do each year to become a Tree City USA, right?
It is.
We have to do this and plant a tree and some other things.
Right there.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Okay, next, Mr. Kerrigan. We'll read the proclamation, Nevada Moves Day. Is there someone here to accept this? Come on down. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas parents driving children to school can account for up to 25% of the morning rush hour traffic in the vicinity of schools, and whereas walking and bicycling to school reduces the number of vehicle trips in the vicinity of schools and potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians or bicyclists. And whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. And whereas the benefits related to physical activity at an early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among children. And whereas children walking and bicycling to school together with parents and caregivers opens opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian bicycle safety and its benefits related to health and the environment. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Nevada are joining together to walk and bicycle to school on Nevada Moves Day on April 24, 2013. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 24, 2013 as Nevada Moves Day in the city of Sparks and encourages citizens to walk or bicycle their children to school while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health this day and throughout the year.
Yeah, I see that. Go ahead.
I'd like to present the mayor with a Nevada Moves t-shirt of his own.
Well, thank you.
There you go. Either one of you. There you go. Sure. Santa Claus.
Turn that up for me.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. My name is Tim Rowe, and I'm from NDOT. I am the Safe Roots to School Coordinator for the whole state, and we appreciate, this is a statewide event with really Clark County, Washoe County are the big players, and also here's the Safe Roots to School Coordinator for Washoe County, M. J. Cloud, and she has more to say.
Good afternoon. I just want to let you guys know that we're pretty excited. We have doubled our schools, and we have over 24 schools that'll be participating throughout this week. It's a busy time, and we hope that if the children can adopt these, this ongoing activities throughout the rest of their day, every day, rather than just one day a year, then that's going to lead to put an end to a lot of the problems that we're having with obesity and overweight children and childhood diabetes. So I thank you for your support in keeping our kids safe, and this goes a long way for Safe Roads to School.
Thank you, guys, for being here. Okay, next is a presentation by the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. Mr. Johns?
Good afternoon. My name is Charles Johns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your allowing me to present today. City Council, Manager Carey, and City Attorney Adams. Two things today I really wanted to touch on. The first is the Sparks Advisory, our Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee, or SEAC, has four new appointments for our membership to introduce, and I'd like to call them up individually to be awarded. First is Councilman Ed Lawson's appointment is Rashawn Johnson. Next is Councilman Ron Smith's appointment of Christopher Dare. Third is Councilman Mike Carrigan's appointment of Duke Brunelli. And fourth is Councilman Ron Schmidt's appointment of Martha Green.
So why don't you, if you want to say a few words, and then we'll have each council member presenting with a certificate.
Okay, sure. My name is Rashawn Johnson. I am a citizen of Sparks for the past three and a half years. In that time, I have worked within our school system and within our community with my parent corporation, with providing canned goods and things for life for our homeless and displaced families over the past three years that I've been in the Sparks area. I am a transplant from the South, so I'm real big on Southern hospitality, so I thank you all for extending that to me here out in the West, and I look forward to my continued service on this advisory committee. Thank you.
I want to say something. I met Rashawn this year.
He said, "I really want to give back to my community," and I said, "Boy, I've got the greatest thing for you."
I didn't know if I was talking.
No. It was in one of my incognito days, but she graciously agreed to be on the Citizens Advisory Committee, and we're looking for great things out of you, so you have a great background that will do us well. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Dare. I serve currently as a, I've been a pastor for 20 years. I'm out of Las Vegas, been up here for four years. I also serve as the Vice Principal for Excel Christian School, and it's just an honor to serve. I like to give back to the community, and I look forward to being a part of whatever this journey opens up to. Thank you.
You know, Christopher, and I'd like to thank you stepping up to the plate to do this. This is not the Citizens Advisory Committee from six years ago. This committee is continuing to evolve, and the leadership in that committee has really made it a viable committee for us, and we really do rely on it, so I want to thank you for stepping up and wanting to do this.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name is Martha Green. I've been a citizen of Sparks for 25 years, and this is a great opportunity to learn more about the community and to offer whatever assistance I can.
Martha's not going to be off that quick.
That easy. I had the opportunity to appoint someone due to redistricting last year, and I lost a member from the Sparks Citizens Advisory Board due to redistricting. And I had just a couple of requirements of the person that I wanted to appoint to the Sparks Citizens Advisory Board. First, it had to be a member of the community that's very, very involved in the community, involved in nonprofits, and does a lot of work in the community. And second, they had to be an excellent speaker and be able to speak out in public and write off the cuff with some items. And third, they had to be a great singer. So I knew that after those three requirements, there was only one person, and Martha's very humble. She's a member of the Rotary Club and has been for 20 years now, doing tremendous work throughout the community. She's a member of Toastmaster for 20-some years, and an excellent speaker, and brings great educational stuff to our group, and if you've ever heard Martha sing, you'll be impressed. And Martha, I've always had a philosophy, if you want something done, give it to a busy person, and I know I picked the right person, so thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Duke Brunelli. I've been a Reno resident or Sparks resident for seven years now. Mike Carrigan, I've known for 45 years, and he's the one that said, "I need to come to this city. It's a beautiful city," and I agree with him. I was, again, in the Navy for 23 years, and I'm presently a pilot with Southwest Airlines, and I'm looking forward to working with the committee to make Sparks a better place to live.
I know it's hard to believe that he's known me for 45 years, I'm only 47, so I don't know how that happened. But, you know, the thing I can say about Duke, I've known him for 45 years, and I trust him, and I talked him into moving to the City of Sparks from California, got him out of that mess and brought him here, and then I said, "I'm going to put him to work the first chance I get." So I found the chance, and I'm going to put him to work. So thanks a lot, Duke, for not volunteering, but for me appointing you.
Thanks, Duke.
Just have him stand over here. I'll take a picture of him individually.
I was going to do that. Why don't you have a big voice? Is he running the show?
Exactly. Have him picture him here. Just do what you're told.
I know.
I'm going to follow up today.
Thank you for volunteering, and we really appreciate it. Okay, Charles, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Boweine, our chairman, regretfully sends his apologies. He had an emergency that surfaced. But I wanted to today present what we've been working on for the past, I'd say, four or five months now regarding our Sparks Citizen Survey. Just a little bit of history about myself. I'm a longtime resident of Sparks. I was appointed by Councilman Smith. I'm currently the Vice Chairman of the Sparks Advisory Committee and served on the committee for roughly three, maybe three, over three years now. So I would, before we kind of get into the survey, kind of provide a few thank yous. Obviously, our Chairman, Mr. Eddie Boweine, who's been instrumental, the Chairman of our Subcommittee, who handled this survey, Mr. Doug Bowles, all the members currently residing on the Sparks Committee, and Mr. Adam Mayberry, who's been very instrumental with his support and guidance for us. Everyone's time and efforts are very well appreciated. I guess before I get into the survey as well, I'd like to really just kind of begin by saying that our advisory survey, or citizen survey, was not intended to duplicate the efforts of the Public Attitude Survey. While the Public Attitude Survey is a survey to gather data on how Sparks citizens feel about their city with regards to quality of life, safety, and so on, our survey was really intended to gather data on how Sparks citizens would prioritize our city services. So I wanted to kind of put that out as a preface. At the inception and throughout our process, our main objective was to create a very concise, yet easy and quick survey for people to complete. We felt that it was very instrumental that we had a very quick and easy survey, nothing that would take five, 10, 15 minutes to complete. So I think if everyone's seen the survey, it was pretty quick and simple, so we wanted to gather that. And the survey was conducted through Survey Monkey. So as we go to the first slide, our survey was presented online from February 21st to April 3rd, and as you can see, it was on the front page of the City of Sparks webpage, and we obtained 231 responses throughout the timeframe that the survey was up. The next slide shows that the public information, how it was disseminated among Sparks residents. We had two press releases, two advertorials, and RGJ, chamber support, website, and social media, and then obviously, our membership pushed it out through their contacts and friends and family. I would also like to thank the City of Sparks and Adam Mayberry for taking their time to push the survey out through the different channels that we did. The next slide shows the participants and how they identified themselves. We tried to get a little bit of a handle on who would be replying to the survey, and as you can see, the other was a little bit vague in general, but I think when you take out student, retired, a business owner, that the other kind of encompassed the standard Spark citizen. So, and as you can see at the bottom, we had 231 total responses. The next slide illustrates the responses by geographic area, and the dots show exactly where, the general area that the folks took the survey. What we did is we asked them for their ZIP code and then also for their nearest cross streets, you know, main streets that they lived by. As you can see, there's a pretty good balance of folks who responded throughout the entire city of Spark. We did have about nine outliers there on the north part, but I feel that a lot of those folks may still think that they actually reside and live in Sparks since their address reflects that, even though they're part of the county.
Oh, we've dealt with those guys before up there.
And the next slide is the question about the participants who responded about various city services. We, again, wanted to keep this very simple, and we asked them to rate each city service as more important, important, or less important. And from there, we could really get a gauge on what services they felt were important to them. These city services really were the ones that we narrowed down on. We didn't want to list city services that internally we would know what they are, but we kind of wanted to make it very applicable to them. So, you know, as opposed to, you know, Parks and Rec, we actually broke that out to say events at Sparks Marina, larger regional parks, smaller neighborhood parks. So we wanted it to be very easy for them to understand what city services were. Then the next slide is the actual results. These were really the, I think there's 12 or 13 categories here, but this really brought it into focus for us, and I hope it brings it into focus for you as well. I kind of want to preface this by saying that we're not intending that a city council adopt a budget or anything like that around these city services. This is mainly just a guideline as to how the citizens respond and what they feel are important. The more important, which is the blue line you'll see there, really came down to core, what we call the Core Four services, and that was police, fire, city infrastructure, and clean and maintain roads. So from those Core Four, it really told us that the survey was valid because the citizens were reflecting that those were the most important, and that's pretty much in line with how we felt that it would pan out. The categories that were listed as important, which is the red lines, all were kind of in the general vicinity of each other. Nothing really was much different than the other, so it really told us that these are kind of quality-of-life services and that they're, we feel they're very important as well, which is Parks and Rec, code enforcement, community senior centers, and so on. What we then asked is that if they were given a hypothetical $100 budget, we asked them to allocate their funds as they deemed appropriate. So if they listed the Core Four, $25, $25, $25, and $25, it would really give us a bearing on how they felt those services were. This is the respondents' budget allocation, and again, you can really see that the Core Four stand out the most, which is police, fire, clean and maintain roads, and city infrastructure. So, and then from there, everything else from 2% to 7% is basically the same. So it really told us that those Core Four services are very important, and then the rest are kind of the quality of life that people are asking for. This is really the same, it's just that it's a respondents' budget allocation in pie chart format, but it really shows that police and fire really stand out along with city infrastructure and code enforcement, or clean and maintain roads. Then the additional feedback that they would like to give us, we really didn't want them to complete the survey without providing feedback, and so there is a packet that we've included, I think it's 12 pages, that really has the citizens' remarks on there. And even if they put none or something, just, you know, everything's great, at least they were providing us some feedback. Just as a reference point, Mr. Mayor, I think you'll be interested in the first comment on the top of page 10 because they endorsed you heavily, so. But that was really the survey as a whole. Again, we wanted to make it very easy, very concise, and we hope that you will use it as kind of a nice tool in order for budget allocation as far as looking at what the citizens are wanting. I just hope that it provides useful insight. Again, want to thank you for your time and letting us present at this forum, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Charles. Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Charles, thank you for putting in time for the survey and getting information on that. My question comes back, because statistically, you know, most people who do surveys or read surveys takes, you know, will tell you quite bluntly that any survey less than 500 statistically is way out of balance. You can't use that data to really determine something.
Sure.
What kind of safeguards were put in the survey to account for such a low, that the data would be just as accurate at 230, it would be 500?
Well, good question, first off, because we did run up against a couple other surveys. I think there was a Park and Rec survey there at the same time along with another survey. When we implemented it, we were trying to get it out as fast as we could so that we could provide you the results before the budget talk started. We've actually entertained the idea of possibly running it moving forward twice a year so that those numbers can go up and we can really see more validity with it. We do think 231 is a pretty valid survey, just from what, like I said, the Core Four really stand out, those four core services as far as protection and maintain.
Well, I guess my question comes down to, the first internet survey that I got to see background data on was when the baseball stadium question was being proposed around here back 10 years ago. And, you know, it listed three or four places where to go, where the citizens thought a baseball stadium should go to, and the survey had, you know, several thousands responded, so on the surface, it looked like it was good, and when we pulled computer data to show up, like 1,500 of those came from the same computer. You know, it was just really, it was a company that was trying to manipulate data so they could be part of the project. And so it really became a... Charles, thank you for putting in time for the survey and getting information on that too. My question comes back, is, you know, statistically, you know, most people who do surveys or read surveys takes, you know, will tell you quite bluntly that any survey less than 500 statistically is way out of balance. You can't use that data to really determine something.
Sure.
What kind of safeguards were put in the survey to account for such a low, that the data would be just as accurate at 230, it would be 500?
Well, good question, first off, because we did run up against a couple other surveys. I think there was a Park and Rec survey there at the same time, along with another survey. When we implemented it, we were trying to get it out as fast as we could, so that we could provide you the results before the budget talk started. We've actually entertained the idea of possibly running it moving forward twice a year, so that those numbers can go up, and we can really see more validity with it. We do think 231 is a pretty valid survey, just from what, like I said, the Core Four really stand out, those four core services, as far as protection and maintain.
Well, I guess my question comes down to, the first internet survey that I got to see background data on was when the baseball stadium question was being proposed around here back 10 years ago. And, you know, it listed three or four places where to go, where the citizens thought that baseball stadium should go to. And the survey had, you know, several thousands responded, so on the surface, it looked like it was good. And when we pulled computer data to show up, like 1,500 of those came from the same computer. You know, it was, it was just really, it was a company that was trying to manipulate data so they could be part of, part of the project. And so, it really became, you know, a fiasco, is what it is. No data that was reliable at all. Anybody used the data for that survey was, you know, would be crazy, because it was so manipulated. How, what kind of safeguards are taken, as far as this type of survey, to say that somebody, could one person represent 100 people in that, that, that survey, just by changing their street location at the cross street?
No, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, I believe that we did enable it to where only one device could record a survey.
So, we did an IP check?
Yes.
Only one IP could?
Now, if they did their laptop and then a phone, you know, could that happen? Sure. But we're fairly confident that this survey was, for informational purposes only, there wasn't anything, I guess, behind it that was, you know, driven by another entity. So, we were fairly confident. But yes, we did the IP checking, so that one device would only be able to vote once.
My only, next time around, is see if we can find a way to tighten those things on up, to where we can get a statistical valid number of people doing the surveys. I know we can't force people to do surveys, but, you know, and try to find a way to move it in the right direction. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And again, I think moving forward, when we try to do it twice a year...
More questions?
...the number one.
Mr. Schmidt?
Just to come. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Even though you didn't have that big of a survey, 231, I was actually happy with that number when you did it. And the mix is all across the board, so I think you had a pretty good mix of everybody out there with different opinions, so I thought it was a good survey.
We were pleased to see that there was equal distribution, pretty much, throughout the entire city limits. I mean, it was, it was very nice to see that, so.
Plus, this is a first-time thing, so I think it'll get better when you do it again.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Ms. Ratty?
I just, same thing, I want to congratulate the Citizens Advisory Committee of taking it on and promoting it. I think, you know, it's challenging. There's, you know, people are pelted with a lot of different opportunities to give feedback in this day and age, and so I think 231, for a first-time effort, is a pretty, pretty good turnout, and I would encourage you to keep moving. I do wonder, there, I know there's lots of things that are missing, and I understand why you narrowed the categories, because it's baffling when you list everything that the city's doing.
Right.
But I'm wondering if it wouldn't be beneficial to do something around the courts, just because they are a central service, and I'd be curious to see what, what folks have to say around that as well.
Great question. We wavered on that as well. We were thinking of putting in administrative services as a general category, but again, we were kind of going back and thinking, well, what's one person's interpretation of administrative services versus another? So, you know, they, again, but good question. We'll take that moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charles.
Thank you.
Sir, if you want to speak under, Adam, you have to fill out a...
Quick question for you. Okay, go ahead. Is social media...
Yes, we're using Facebook, and, Facebook mainly, but we also use the city websites and push it out internally.
Okay, thanks, Charles.
Thank you.
Good job. Appreciate all your hard work. Thanks. Okay, 4.8 is presentation by Load IQ, as part of the new Business Monthly Information. Mr. Lawson?
Well, I think we have, there he is. This, I'm just, as an introduction here, I did take a tour of C4Cubed and got to see some great startup businesses. And this business I found particularly interesting, so I'm going to let you give your presentation. But we're going to continue this once a month, as we go along, and draw from other entities besides C4Cubed, sorry, Lynn, but we've got to share some time with other folks. And it's just impressive to me, as I was just reading the comments on the citizen's survey, is economic development, it was a big concern, and I'm, one of my big passions, obviously, is big, is economic development. So, it's cool to see that we have this many smart people that live here already. Go ahead. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir, just give us your name for the record.
My name is Hampton Coons. I'm the CEO of Load IQ. I have a presentation. And when I prepared this presentation, I didn't realize your agenda would be as busy as it is, so I am going to run through this a little quicker and skip over a few slides.
Okay.
But at Load IQ, we make a device that measures energy coming into a building, and our target market is commercial buildings, and we use signal processing to itemize energy loads in there, so people can get, like you do after a dinner, or on your phone bill, you get an itemized bill of what, how you're spending your energy dollars. And with this information, people can save money. To date, we brought a million and a half dollars into the community through grants from, from national organizations, including National Science Foundation, California Energy Commission, and Department of Energy. Right now, we're working under the National Science Foundation grant, and are trying to raise investment dollars that would also be matched to further R&amp;D efforts, and we're pulling heavily on the university people to help us with the R&amp;D. We have exclusive license to patents in this area. We've had paid trials from Tier One players, and coming this year, we're starting at trials with our system deployed in telephone central offices, so that the telephone company can monitor their cooling loads and know how their systems are performing, and anticipate failures and solve their energy problems. We have nine employees currently. I came from the Desert Research Institute and started this company in 2007, and this is an example of how our technology works. On the upper-left corner is how many people would monitor loads in buildings right now is by putting submeters along all the branch circuits. What we do is just measure the mains and use a signal processing algorithm to isolate the loads, and that allows you to see the detailed usage of your energy with a much faster install and, and lower system costs. So, I'm just going to go through these here and talk about how this relates in our community. We're currently partnering with a group called EnviroLution, and, that develops curricula for middle and high school students related to energy conservation and green technologies. And we have this installed at O'Brien Middle School, our system, and we're looking at various loads that are on in that facility. Here's a picture of the system being installed there. And this is how their energy breaks down over, over time, and this is how much energy is used in a day. So, they're using about $400 to $450 a day in the school. So, looking for areas for conservation can be very important. What we found was that overnight, a lot of the loads were not turning off, and so that by better managing their control systems in those buildings, they can save, can save maybe $30,000 or $40,000 a year in that particular school. And so, we can, we hope to expand this to other schools in Washoe County. And this is all with a control system that they monitor at a central location, so just making sure those work well can help to reduce their expenses. Here's the team that we have built so far. I have a partner, business partner, Buma Kandua, who is a business development person. We also have several doctorates from the University of Nevada system, and Scott Kimich and John Byrne are senior engineers working on the software and hardware. Just to tell you where we're going next, is that we're launching our product in quarter three, targeting the central offices, but we also see this as a useful tool in retail spaces and, and commercial offices as well. And we're fundraising with investors and getting some traction, actually, here in the community. That will help us bring in the half-million-dollar match from the National Science Foundation. And that's, I'll head.
Questions for Hampton? Go ahead.
I just wanted you, you told me a story about a pump, and didn't even know that this pump existed, and by having this monitoring system, you're able to find it. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
So, so many buildings, because energy is invisible, you just, everybody puts it into their budget, and they say, this is what I'm doing, paying every month. They don't see there's a lot of opportunity for savings. But as an example, on this big blue line, which is the total power consumed at that particular school, in the middle of the night, they're still using about 55 kilowatts of power, when there's nobody in the school, the lights, only the security lights are on, but the HVAC system is still churning away. In other buildings, we've seen cases where certain, recirculating pumps are left on, not put on timers, and they're not serving the people in the buildings, they're just using up energy, and by putting, putting them under control systems, they can save a lot of money on operating these equipment. So, we hope to, with this technology, we hope to bring this transparency to, that was previously available only to the bigger companies and bigger buildings, to, because it's less expensive to install, it can serve smaller buildings and save, save everybody some, some money.
Hampton, is your, the people you do this for just locals, or are you expanding out to other areas?
There's a telephone company, a national telephone company that we're doing this for. We have trial, we had trials in France, Germany, and Japan in the last year. And it's, we were just involved in a national study of these technologies that took place by the Electric Power Research Institute, and we were one of the top finishers in that evaluation.
That's great. Well, make sure when you go global now, that you just keep your home office here.
Yeah, I love it here, so I want to stay.
Anyone else?
It's great.
Hampton, thank you very much. Good luck on your business. We appreciate you coming by today.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Carrigan?
I'd like to pull 5.4.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.3, and 5.5, and 5.6.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 5.1 through 5.3, 5.5, and 5.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 5.4, Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, there's, there's just one big number in there, 775,000. Doesn't say anything about how much we want to cut out for the attorney if we need it, and our 778,000. How much of that would go back to City of Sparks?
For the record, Andy Hummel, Utility Manager, City of Sparks, if none of it gets spent on outside legal, a third of that amount. We were one-third partners.
I would much rather see this organization, you know, the committee, go to Western Regional Water Commission, because I think we're trying to see if, we're set aside some money to buy some water rights under the Western Regional Water Commission, and I would like to see we, you know, the city plus Marina and Washoe County, go to the WRWC and see if they can, if we need to pay for the legal services, too.
It's a separate matter from that. This was, the Water Quality Settlement Agreement was for the Tom Whorf expansion, so it's separate from all the TROA obligations and things like that. So, this is money...
No, but it's talking about the $12 million we spent on water rights, right?
Yes. Yeah, that was our, the $12 million obligation for the last plant expansion.
Oh, it is? So, it has nothing to do with TROA?
No.
But it still, it still falls underwater, and we do have the Western Regional Water Com... I'm just trying to get $200,000 back to the City of Sparks.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if we just okay this, it doesn't even have a number. It just says whatever it takes.
No, any, and any future contract, if it did become necessary, would have to come back to all three parties for approval.
Well, how long are we going to have, how long is this going to be hanging out there?
Until the transfer applications are finalized with the state engineer.
And how many more of those are left?
We've got, we've got a couple of them are in to test the waters, to see what we get for protests. And then, from there, we've got, there are, I want to say 78 individual water rights that are holders that have been purchased out of, and those are shared between us and Pyramid Lake.
Okay.
So, roughly half of those are ours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Looking for a motion?
Make a motion approved.
Do you have a second? Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve 5.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. General Business 6.1, possible review and approval of the amended Sparks Legislative Platform. Mr., who are you? Mr. Mayberry?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Adam Mayberry, your Community Relations Manager. For the record, if you recall, two weeks ago, we brought to you an item for, for the council to take a position on, a legislative item, had to deal with award-only voting, and there was some discussion led by Councilman Carrigan to take a look at the platform and perhaps put some language in there that gives the legislative team a little more autonomy to act a little quicker, because, as he pointed out correctly, things are pretty fluid, and they move fairly quickly. So, on Page 16, we did add some language under the program policies that clarifies that intent, and it reads as follows, "In the interest of the timely operation of the 120-day session of the Nevada Legislature, and during this special session, the Sparks Legislative Team has full discretion exercise their judgment in implementing the legislative platform, which includes items that may not be addressed in the platform." And we'll certainly continue to update you on those key items, and also update you on the weekly basis with what's taking place down in Carson City. So, that's a brief summary. Be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Mayberry? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, thank you, Adam. I think that gives enough leeway to our legislative team, that they can, you know, go with the flow. So, thanks a lot for that. I'll make a motion we approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Sorry. All right. A motion by Mr. Carrigan, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Adam. 6.2, consideration and possible approval to submit for a Nevada Division of Emergency Management, Emergency Management Performance Grant, Mr. Driscoll, in the amount of $80,271.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager and Emergency Manager for the city, for the record. I am here today to ask permission to apply for state grant through State Department of Emergency Management for monies that are allocated by FEMA and the Homeland Security Department from the federal government. This is similar to a grant that we've been receiving for, since 2005. What it does is it offsets monies that we do, do already spend for planning and implementing exercises, drills, and systems related to emergency preparedness. It's an, it's a 50% match. The $80,000, we would receive $80,000 in dollars from the federal government, based on in-kind spending by us. We typically, this offsets salaries and dollars for people that are concentrating on emergency management. So, with that, I'm seeking permission to apply for this grant. We've basically been told by the state that we already have been pre-approved, but I need your permission to fill out the paperwork.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Any questions? Pretty straightforward. If not, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
Moved to direct staff to apply for the Emergency Management Performance Grant for the federal fiscal year 2012, in the amount of $80,271.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve a gen item 6.2, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
6.3 is consideration, discussion, and possible approval of fiscal year 2013-14 budget recommendations and fiscal items, including the city manager's recommendations for the Spark, City of Sparks final budget, the city's property tax rate, and number three, the proposed five-year capital improvement plan. Mr., I forgot your name, too.
Good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to talk about budgets. Jeff Kronk, Financial Services Director, for the record. Attached to your agenda today is a rather large book. There's lots of information in there. Some of it, we talked about at our, at our council workshop on the 18th, and some of it is new, but it absolutely entails most of our expectations and what we're looking for, further direction and guidance to build the final budget for 2014. In that book, I just want to over, give you an overview of what's in there. The major categories are overview of the city leadership and policy documents, including the strategic plan and fiscal policies, and how those fiscal policies, the results of those, according to the numbers that we built into this... those, according to the numbers that we built into this document. The other major areas that you'll find in this, information in this book are the city manager budget recommendations, which include all kinds of information, like I said before, including a presentation, a staff report, the presentation. I tried to make the focus this year on jobs. You know, we're seeing some stability, obviously, in housing and, and sales, but you know, honestly, the focus is jobs. So you'll see a lot of charts in there that talk about both the regional and also the national picture. I'm not going to go over those specifically individually, but I wanted to provide that for you for information. Also in this book, we're going to, we have information on the general fund revenues and expenditures as they tie into our strategic goals and core services. We have an in-depth view of other funds and actually a summarization of each fund within there and what the purpose of each fund is and kind of how, how the status is and what their, the fiscal look is for that, for the next fiscal year and then the previous couple of years before that. We also have a debt review in this document, a department review and information on the redevelopment agency areas one and two. And then as an appendix to this book is the five-year capital improvement plan, which you've already seen on March 18th. There was just very small changes to made to this one. So that in essence is the overview of the book. What I'd like to do, if you'd indulge me, is just kind of use the staff report as a guide to give you the overview of what we're asking today. And, you know, I invite you to, you know, interrupt me with questions or, or points of clarification and, and of course I would, you know, invite city manager Kerry to, you know, fill in any gap I might leave. But, so if you would indulge me, I would just like to first read a couple of the first paragraphs on the staff report, just so I can get it into record of what we're looking for today and just so I don't miss anything. But, so today, the city manager and myself are presenting the city manager's final budget recommendations for fiscal 13-14. Today, the city council is asked to direct staff in preparing the city's final budget document for submission to the state of Nevada. City staff has attended, has filed a tentative budget for the fiscal year 2013-14 and city council will receive public comment on the fiscal year tentative, 2014 tentative budget on Tuesday morning, May 21st at 9:00 AM. Immediately following that public hearing of the tentative budget, the city manager and myself will present the final budget document, which will be prepared based on the direction we received today. The final budget must be filed with the state Nevada Department of Taxation by June 1st annually. And there is an allowance that we can file an extension during a legislative year if the legislature takes action that affects our final budget. Attached, as I said before, to this agenda is the city manager's budget recommendation book, as well as the proposed five-year capital improvements plan. City manager's budget recommendation book provides a synopsis of results and expectations of the budget recommendations for the various funds of the city and the Sparks Redevelopment Agency for fiscal year 2013-14. Today, I will be presenting this material that can be found in this book and seeking your feedback and approval of how to proceed to build the final budget. So in essence, the three things that we're going to be looking for today is the approval and direction on the next year's fiscal budget per the, according to what the city manager has already put together in this book, we're looking for a recommendation and approval to go forward. The second thing that we're looking forward to is a final approval of the city's property tax rate. And again, within this book, according to the direction that we received at March 18th, we do have a increase in the property tax rate built into the numbers equal to two pennies of $100 assessed value. And then the third thing that we're asking for today is just an approval of the proposed five-year capital improvements plan. And again, there's not too much difference based upon what the presentation you received on March 18th. So with that, I'd just like to dive right in a little bit and give you an overview. Unless we have questions up to this point, I'll just continue on of what we're seeing in the city manager's budget recommendations. So to summarize, we follow the adopted fiscal policies that we received on March 18th and notably, excuse me, notably, the city manager's recommendations include a general fund ending fund balance equal to 7.3% of expenditures. And if you recall, you had given us direction to drop that down by a percent as a measure to fill our identified gap at the time. To do so, or I'm sorry, the city manager though would like, is going to try to achieve and all the city staff is going to try to achieve that 8.3% ending fund balance by utilizing the project innovations process that we are undertaking. And we want to make this as part of our culture to try to make us a lean organization as much as we possibly can and cut waste and maximize the things that we can do and do well. So in order to get to that 8.3% ending fund balance, we will need to utilize that process and find approximately $560,000 in next fiscal year. And then as we look forward into fiscal 15, initial projections show that we're going to be about $1.2 million short. This manager's recommendation also reflects the various initiatives approved by council to fill, if you recall, we had a two and a half million dollar gap. And those initiatives can be found on page 48. So if you'd like to follow along, I'm not going to go through those because we spent a good four hours on those, but they're there for your remembrance and if you want to refer to them, they are on page 48. Also, the city manager is recommending approval of the various new positions and reclassifications. This is new since the October 18th workshop that we had and those can be found starting on page 22 of this book. City memberships and contributions, as you've already approved on April 8th, is also included in this book. Also, we have received some good news after the March 18th workshop where we had a notice from the Department of Justice that the COFs grant that we've been having for the last few years that's currently funding six police officer positions has been extended for one year. It's not a new award, it's an extension of the old award and that's common with federal grants. So what essentially happened is we didn't expend the full amount of the grant and they granted us another year to fully spend that. And what we expect now is that that would be fully expended by the end of the third quarter of next fiscal year. So around this time next year, the, the general fund will be needing to pick up the full, the full amount of the six officers that's been funded through that grant, but at least we got another three quarters of, of coverage for that. So that brought savings of about $350,000 that we had not talked about at, at the last workshop. Just continuing down, this also includes a $352,000 transfer to the general fund, as we have talked about before, from the Development Services Fund to continue to pay back the general fund that had subsidized Development Services Fund to the tune of $1.116 million during fiscal year 10 and 11. The idea is to pay that money back to the general fund over a course of time and we're anticipating equal installments of about $352,000 beginning next fiscal year until that's paid off in fiscal 16. We want to continue to monitor that fund and if the health of that fund is, is good enough to do so, we'll expedite that if, if that's so desired. We also built into this plan a reduction of health insurance fund contribution and premium rates by 8%. That also follows an 8% reduction in fiscal 13. And this is going to be applicable to anybody, including the city. Excuse me, I've been fighting allergies this weekend. Including the city's contributions. The city pretty much pays about 80% of all contributions into that fund, but retirees and some employees also pay into that fund. So this would be savings across the board, if you will, everybody who puts contributions in. And for the general fund purposes, that should save about $400,000 next fiscal year. We've also included a 1% salary reduction for all management, which includes department heads and OE, operating engineers and supervisors and the confidential personnel, which reflects splitting the 2% pers rate increase. And just by way of, to remember, starting in this coming July, the pers rate will increase for regular members from 23.75% to 25.75%, so an increase of 2%. So splitting of that in half is the, is how we come up with the 1% salary reduction and that's per the, per the contracts, current contracts of those employee groups. For police and fire members, their pers rate increases from 39.75% to 40 and a half percent and a splitting of the rate is not included in their contracts. This city manager's recommendations also includes the use of the unspent C-Tax bond proceeds. These were bond proceeds that were issued in 2007. Oh, thank you. I'm good. Okay, I'll take it. It's hitting earlier this year. It's usually in June, but there was a lot of wind. Thank you very much. So those bond proceeds were not completely spent primarily because we didn't build a city hall. That's, was one of the things that was earmarked for that. So since those, those proceeds are not spent, we're able to use that either on other projects or debt service. And we built into the plan, as we have talked about, to utilize those unspent bond proceeds over the next couple of years. And next year, that would include about $730,000 to relieve that pressure that we're seeing. The next item that we included is related to, to the use of the bond proceeds and it's due to the need to subsidize a redevelopment agency area number two debt service in the amount of about $750,000. Again, the city issued debt in 2007, which was to be paid by the redevelopment agency area two. However, those property taxes have not kept up with the debt service needs and essentially they're not able to cover all the debt service. So the city needs to subsidize it to the, to this, to the amount that it's paying its own debt service that was issued in the city's name. Fortunately, we're expecting that to come off the books, that subsidy to come off the books in about four fiscal years. Fiscal 17 is when that debt is scheduled to mature and so then that subsidy should, should go away. Just as a side note, for redevelopment one, that's probably when we're expecting that to be subsidized sometime in the next couple of years. So we're going to have a crossing effect here. There are other funds in this book that I'm not going to go over specifically because there's a lot of them, frankly, but it's certainly in there for, for your information. But I did want to also go over just the highlights then of what we're expecting in the general fund, which is the city's general and most used, talked about, operating fund. And those are that our revenues after six years of declines, we are expecting to see an increase in next fiscal year, small, about 2.3% or about $1.2 million. The expenses, however, are also expected to increase by just under $1 million or about 1.9%. And overall expenses are expected to be greater than revenues, including all the transfers and transfers, transfers in and transfers out, such that the fund balance looks to be reduced by about $975,000 next fiscal year. So at the end, the fiscal fund, fiscal year 14 fund balance is expected to be about 7.3% of total expenses or $500,000 under the council's goal of 8.3%. And again, as I mentioned before, the city manager will be, well, directing all city staff to see what we can do to get back to that 8.3%. So essentially what we're asking you to do is, is provide guidance and approve the ability to lower the fund balance down to 7.3% with the idea that we're going to try to get back up there. Okay. So with that, that concludes my presentation on number one, which would be just seeking approval on the city manager's budget recommendations. There is some overlapping activity in this a little bit. So if there aren't any questions, I could just plow right on into number two, which is the property tax rate.
Go ahead, Adam.
Are you going to take these one by one to vote? Are we going to do them all at once?
Your preference.
So we can get to that. Go ahead, Mr. Carrigan.
Is, you have been provided three separate motions for, for you to work from today. So you do have the budget recommendations and then you have the tax rate question. And the last one has to do with adopting the capital improvement plan. So you have three motions we're looking for today.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, before we leave this topic with the general fund, can you go over all the reclassifications?
They're located for you on page 22 of your, of your workbook. And actually, I'm probably not best suited to answer those questions. I would probably defer those to either the city manager or his designated.
I would like those to go on public record.
I'm sorry?
I would like those to be read alouds for public records so all the employees know who's being reclassified and why.
Certainly, I'll do that for you.
I have Jeff White, that one other question. I just want to make sure I got your numbers right because I got a meeting coming up that I need to have these numbers. The differences between 13 budget and 14 budget in revenues is $1.2 million.
Yes.
We have cost increases that are borne through contracts and everything else like that, that takes $1 million of that away.
Yes.
So in essence, we have $200,000 in funds to spend that we did not have before.
That's correct.
How many items since our budget retreat have we already committed that $200,000 to?
This includes all items that, that would have been, that we've identified.
I understand it, but we've, we've done a whole list of contributions that we had, you know, because the way I'm, I'm seeing it, you know, $200,000, we put well over 25% of that into one organization of discretionary fund we have. So we're taking, we're losing down discretionary funds. The only real money that we have to work with is things that we're taking away from either savings or other accounts.
Yes.
We don't have any extra money here.
That's true. We're actually decreasing our fund balance for the second year in a row. As you see in the results, we're looking for fiscal 13 to be a reduction of about 1.7, 1.8 million dollars. And that's actually in line, pretty much in line with what our budget was for this, for this year. And then next fiscal year, we'll follow that up with another, you know, approximately a million dollar drawdown on those reserves.
My, my point here is that this is all a smokescreen. We're not addressing the problem. We're just taking money away from savings and everything else like that. With the payday's coming, you know, I mean, we all know it, that we're going to be up against some real rock and hard places very, very quickly.
Yeah, to, to that point, there are a lot of items in here that are temporary, you know, like, for example, the use of the C-Tax bond proceeds is a perfect example. That's a very finite number and I can do that for two years.
One-time shot.
Yeah. And then there will be a time where we're using every trick in the book that we can possibly do, as we have been for six years now, you know.
Raising taxes is a one-time shot. You know, I mean, taking any, any fund balance on that, there's only so much you can go on out of that. You know, the handwriting's on the wall here that, you know, you put a Band-Aid on something that's gushing and you got to stop it. You got to stop the bleeding here. So that's my, thank you.
Kerry, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry. I had to turn to the, the correct page there. The changes that are recommended by the city manager this year first started in the Management Services Division. Within our city clerk division, with the retirement of the city clerk, we chose to eliminate the assistant city clerk position and combine that with the existing EIMS coordinator, which is our electronic records management coordinator, to one position. And so we do want to change the title of the one remaining position to be assistant city clerk slash EIMS coordinator. And this is funded, of course, by the removal of one position from the budget. In the financial services department, no reclassifications were identified and the same is true in the Parks and Recreation Department. However, in community services, as we deal with the infrastructure of the city, the, we are looking to reclassify the title of the Assistant Community Services Director. This is a retitling to Assistant Community Services slash City Engineer. This will align the title of the position to allow them to prosecute documents requiring a signature of a city engineer. However, there is no adjustment to pay associated with this change. In the Public Works Division, there is one Maintenance Worker Three which position, which is being reclassified to a Maintenance Worker Four. This is a facilities position and it is necessary to, given the workload of this position for the wide variety of technical specialties, as you know, we have gone through considerable downsizing in our facilities division and we believe that the person is currently performing these duties and should therefore be reclassified. We have fallen very short in electrician, so we are looking for one of our electrical two positions to be reclassified as an electrician three. We have lost again a number of these positions and find that the person is working again at a complex technical skill level. And one additional new position is sought in this area, so we are adding one person here as an electrician two. We feel that's very much needed by our demands for the maintenance of our traffic signal systems and the electrical systems in all city facilities. We do have one GIS technician two, which has been eliminated in exchange for a position of system developer one-two. So this is a transfer of increased technical breadth in relation to the IT discipline. Most of the changes contained in these reclassifications center on the wastewater treatment plant, which has undergone significant change in prior budget years in the Truckee Meadows Water Reclam- In the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, we do find a necessity to add a laboratory supervisor to the position of laboratory manager. This is to align the functions of the treatment plant laboratory with other similar organizations, and it is very much in response to the oversight of the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection to ensure that we have supervision, which is being provided at a proper level, and it is specifically in their comments that we're reacting. We have a process control coordinator. As you know, our treatment plant is heavily dependent upon the proper coordination of the control system. This is a position of treatment plant process engineer. We feel that this best reflects the type of work that is necessary at the treatment plant to control the operating control systems we use. In addition, we do need a separate and distinct laboratory quality assurance officer. In our downsizing that we did in the past, we did make this a peer review position. That change is not satisfactory for oversight to the standards of the laboratory as found by the state's environmental protection office, and we do need to recreate a position for separate quality control. As you know, water quality is our primary purpose, protecting health, safety, and welfare of the public, and we feel this quality assurance officer position will protect the members of the public to the degree necessary to maintain our permit from the state of Nevada for operation. We have also adding two additional wastewater operator one-twos. This is dictated by staffing levels and has been carefully studied by the treatment plant prior to this recommendation. It brings us in alignment with proper oversight of the 24-hour operations of the plant by certified operators. And finally, we are looking for one additional person to join our crew at the treatment plant to work as a system analyst. Everything we do there is very computer-oriented, and we're trying to add positions there. Moving on to the police department, the scope and breadth of activities have changed for two office specialists. Office specialists are two entry-level positions in our administrative pool. However, the duties that are being currently performed by these two employees reflect the proper description of administrative secretary, and so we are recommending that change. No changes or reclassifications were submitted from the fire department. In our legal department, we do have four legal secretary positions, and the city attorney wishes to reclassify them with new titles and job descriptions, which will more closely align with how the department is actually operating. It creates secretary one-two in the criminal division and a secretary one-two in the civil division. Mr. Adams is not seeking any changes in pay associated with that position. However, we are looking to change one of our senior assistant city attorneys, be reclassified to the position of chief assistant city attorney, to reflect the supervision of all of the department's management operations in the absence of the city attorney. And the municipal comorbid submitted no reclassifications. That would end my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Carr, for reading out.
My purpose of this is that, you know, until this report, this is the first we heard of the reclassifications of employees, or the hiring of new employees or anything else like that. It was made, my recollection of the retreat, very clear that, you know, the council's instruction was to no layoffs, but I don't recall it saying at the hearing that we're going to be adding employees, or we're going to be changing employees' salaries, so I'm very concerned that we're at this time of this meeting that we now have reclassification of employees.
If I could, I just wanted to touch, I think that's a misunderstanding of the process we used. We held a budget workshop primarily focused upon your policy implementation, and we do that each year ahead of the budget recommendations. Most commonly and consistent with past years, we have included any needs of reclassifications in new positions at this time in the process. So I would just refresh your collection that, yes, you are seeing this for the first time, but that is consistent that these would be contained in your manager's recommendations, and they are up for your decisions today, sir.
And I appreciate that. Where I'm coming from is that we just went through a six-hour retreat, very tense, to cut $2.5 million out. I'm not so sure it's a good time to be adding personnel when you have to cut $2.5 million out.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Onto the second item that we're seeking approval on is the property tax rate, and I just want to give you some information and background as to what that entails. Currently, the property tax is capped by statute at $3.64. In 2003, the legislative session added two cents. That technically is outside that cap, but they played a few games there that essentially raised that cap from $3.64 to $3.66 per $100 of assessed valuation. Currently, the city of Sparks property tax rate, the overlapping property tax rate, this is the total property tax rate that property owners would pay, is $3.6163 per $100 of assessed valuation. That basically means that the city is $0.37 under the maximum of $3.66 as allowed by the law. Each penny, oh, I'm sorry, I just skipped that, for that $0.37, the city council does have the authority to raise it up to that cap of $3.66. For every penny that the tax rate would be raised, would raise an additional about $189,000 of property tax revenue, and increasing it to the max would mean about $825,000 of additional property tax general fund revenue. City manager has included a property tax increase of two cents per $100 of assessed value as directed by council at the March 18 workshop. This will be added to the city's operating rate, which is currently .9161, so of the overlapping rate, our portion for the operating rate is .9161, thus increasing it to .9361 per $100 of assessed value. Proposed two pennies is expected to generate about $360,000 after taking some consideration for abatement. And then if this is approved, this will be the first property tax increase in nine years since the current rate was established in 2004. So with that, that'd be the second piece, if I had any questions there, or we can... Okay?
Moving on.
Moving on. The third one is very short, because there hasn't been much changes since what you had received is regarding the five-year capital improvement plan for the city. And again, that's attached as an appendix to this book, and again, as very insignificant differences from what you actually saw. Essentially, it's the same. So those are the three items that we're looking for, approval and direction on today. Again, the approval or direction of alternative measures on the city manager's budget recommendations for next fiscal year. The second one, approval of the property tax rate. And then the third is the capital improvement, the five-year capital improvements plan. And with that, it concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions for Jeff or Sean? No questions? Okay, what's your pleasure, council? Want to take number one first and move on as we go along? Mr. Lawson?
I'd suggest we just take them one by one.
Okay.
And so with that, I'll make a motion to move to approve the city manager's budget recommendations for fiscal year 2013-14. And that's item one.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ratty? Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the manager's recommendations. Questions? Mr. Kerrigan?
I just have a comment. You know, I took a look at the general fund, and I think there's only $17,000, there's no new hires, but it's going to be $17,000 by the reclassification. I think the new hires come out of the Truckee Meadows Reclamation Facility, but I just want to go on record saying I'm going to vote yes on this, but I really am upset that we have to subsidize redevelopment District Two with $750,000 of the general fund because of some bad decision-making.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing no further questions, please vote. Passes four to one, Mr. Schmidt? No, okay. Let's move on to number two. Questions for Jeff or Sean? Ms. Ratty?
No question. I would make, I would move to approve a two-cent increase in the property tax rate from .6163 to .6363 per $100 of assessed value.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second? Okay, dies for lack of a second. Okay, let's move on then, Mr. Lawson.
So let me try another motion.
Okay.
I move not to approve the two-cent increase for property tax rate per 100 assessed value.
I think you've already done that.
We don't need to do that, do we?
I think it's already done.
Perfect.
There wasn't a second, so it dies. Do you want to move on to number three, then? Okay?
Sure.
Mr. Schmidt?
I just had a question on number two, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Technically, since your budget is designed around that question, does that now make your budget null?
No, it is, there is an overlapping piece to that. What, essentially, then, what would happen is we would drop the fund balance and take that out of the fund balance, so that'd be $360,000. So instead, really, the only, the only effect there would be, instead of the 7.3%, you would be seeing a 6.6% ending fund balance.
But that's not what your budget says. Your budget says that you'll go $500,000 less than 8.3. Now, you're going to go $800,000, and I don't know where that direction came from. Why is it that, because property taxes didn't go, the council assumes that you're going to take it out of the bottom line, and that's why your budget now is null and void, because you can't make that decision by yourself where the money comes from.
That's why we're here, is looking for direction. So if there is, but essentially, if nothing is done, that's where it would go, just by default, it would have to go to the bottom line. But we would absolutely be looking for direction.
Sure.
You know, otherwise, that's the purpose of this meeting, is, you know, this is the second swing at this budget process.
Direction to fill that gap.
Direction to fill the gap, or just move it to the bottom line, or, you know, we're going to take this direction, so, you know, just so I can reiterate on the record again, we're not approving the final budget, so we're going to take this direction back to prepare the final budget, and then we're going to bring that back on May 21 after the tentative budget hearing.
Okay, Mr. Kerrigan.
On your COPS grant, where did that $350,000 go?
Go?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
We're not going to use it, because when we sat at our meeting, our budget meeting, we were anticipating spending $350,000 in the next fiscal year to pay for those six COPS. What happened to that $350? Because you shouldn't have moved that anywhere, because we didn't give you permission, right?
Correct.
But that'll make up the $389,000, you know, minus $39,000.
Not entirely.
No, $39,000, if you're going to do math.
Yeah, but since then and now, you know, we've had a month, and during that month, you know, we rescrub all the revenues and expenditures, and we took that into consideration. So fortunately, we got that, otherwise, we would be looking at even a lower fund balance to start this. So all things being equal, if that was the only thing, we were actually looking at any fund balance.
No, no, no. Okay, then you're, then, once again, when we sat there at our budget retreat, did we not find the $350,000 somewhere else for the COPS, to pay back the COPS grant?
Not directly, but it was part of the process, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure I follow.
So we found that money already. Now you're telling we didn't find the money, because all I'm saying is if we don't raise two cents, we're only $39,000 off, from what that would have gotten us.
That's built into the new projections, so...
Where did it get built into? That's what I'm saying. So you took $350,000 and did something with it without our permission?
No.
Okay, then where did it go?
No, it's all baked, if you will, into the revenues and expense projections that I'm bringing forward to you right now.
Okay, that doesn't compute, because we were...
This is 13-14 we're talking about.
We were even steaming, we were even steaming when we left that room. Is that not correct?
We had, we had an ending fund balance of 7.3%.
Right. And that included the $350,000 to pay for the six police officers.
Yes.
Now that we don't have to pay for that three, where did that $350 go?
There's a lot of things. When we relook at those, at all the revenues and expenditures, it's a combination of a lot of things. Like, for example, since then, we received our last property tax installment, and property taxes are a little less this year and next year than what we had anticipated at March 18. C-Tax is actually looking a little bit higher this year, because we had a great January, but it's looking a little lower next year. So there's a lot of things. There's also some expenditures that we didn't account for in, at the March 18 that we got better knowledge about.
Okay, so let me just tell, what would you have said to us if we didn't get the extension for the COPS grant?
You'd be sitting at about a 7% ending fund balance.
So that's what you would have said?
Yes.
And that would have been including the two cents property tax increase?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lawson?
I'm having a hard time figuring out where $350,000 disappeared to in a month's time. That's a little scary. Where else can we find this money at, Jeff? That's what I'm looking for, suggestions.
We had a list at our last workshop, and we didn't, you didn't approve, you didn't give us direction on everything. We could go back to that list. If you're looking, I assume you mean if you don't want us to put it directly to the ending fund balance.
Correct.
There are things that were left on that list that we didn't entertain, or we entertained but didn't approve.
So are we going to have another, are we going to have another retreat and talk about this again, or?
No, we've got to make some recommendations today.
We can do it right now.
We need some recommendations today, so we can get to the final budget.
Yeah, essentially, what we're after there is that $360,000 without that two pennies of the property tax.
Well, I told you you had $350,000, and then you told me we didn't have $350,000 for the COPS grant, because that's news to us.
There's a lot of news, let me reiterate, there's a lot of news that happens, well, all year long. At some point, we draw a line in the sand, and we've got to file a budget. So every, every month, we analyze our C-Tax. Every quarter, we analyze our property taxes, and those were, there was two big pieces of information that we're missing at the March workshop. That led a lot to that. So we also, you know, take more time to look at our expenditures, and we're just narrowing down that microscope, and a lot can happen in a month.
It still scares me that if that happens every month, that's $4 million.
We've had some volatility in our revenues.
I mean, that's 10% of our budget.
Mm-hmm. The last four, if I can refresh your memory, the last four months that we've received C-Taxes, two have been up, two have been down. One has been down very significantly, our December one, but then followed up by a very significant increase in January, so it is very volatile right now.
So that tells me the ending fund balance is more important than ever. You can vary by $4 million.
Yes.
Ms. Ratty?
Yeah, I guess I'm a little, I understand the point of the, of it's a little bit hard to hear today, but this is the exact same process we've gone through for the past at least five years, and this is actually the least volatile year that I remember this happening. I mean, every year, as we move through each of our budget workshops, we get one more month's worth of projections, and as we get closer and closer to year end, those projections get tighter and tighter, because we have four months' worth of information, six months' worth of information, seven months' worth of information. And so it's, I don't think there's a sleight of hand here. I just want to go on the record as, there's no sleight of hand, there's no, we're moving this $350,000. It is that our very talented finance staff gives us tighter and tighter projections each month that goes by, and they're projections. I mean, and in, and as we all know, three years ago, they were wild-ass guesses. I mean, and there's some...
Is that the technical term?
That is the technical term, yes. And there's some truth to that still, because it's a volatile, it's still a volatile economy. So I'm perfectly comfortable with having to go to the ending fund balance, because as we know, we've got a good staff that has been managing to better than our budget expectations every single year that we've been in this economic crisis. So I'm happy with moving forward with the budget as recommended, understanding that we would be improving a budget with a lower ending fund balance, and yes, there's some risks to that, and I hear what you're saying, but it's the same risk we've been facing for the last five years.
Mr. Smith?
You know, Jeff, I'm just a little confused, because we have all those accounts, contingencies, and everything else, that we, we had money in, we took some out, put it back in, and we came to this, to this deal on the budget, and now we're going to take it from the ending balance. When we were trying to get to 16-6, we got the, instead of 8-3, when then it went to 7-3, and now we're at 6-6. That's what I'm not getting.
If we don't take direction to reduce the budget elsewhere, that's where it would be.
So how come we don't have those lists and everything, so we can redo that? Because these are new figures you're giving us.
Yes. I could put it up on the screen, if that's...
Why don't you do that?
I can do that.
Is there a page in the book?
There isn't.
There isn't? That's why I can't find it here.
No, I was going to put it, I was going to put it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, while you're doing that, Mr. Kerrigan?
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I didn't say there was a sleight of hand at all. I just, you know, that was good news to me that we, you know, the COPS grant... I just, you know, that was good news to me, that we, you know, the COPS grant got extended. The point I'm trying to make is that this thing is so volatile that, you know, every month is something different. And I have no problem at all either, like Julia was, doing the ending fund balance, because we were going to go down to 6.6, I think, in our meeting anyway, isn't that what, what we went down to in the retreat? And if we're not going to raise property taxes, well, that's about the only thing you can do.
This might be hard to see. This, this might be hard to see, so let me, let me, let me read them to you. And again, this is a list that, that we gave to you at the workshop. This is the, the weeded-down list, if you will. Everything that you've approved is located in, in your book there. These are the things that did not get approved.
Did not get approved.
Right, so this didn't make the cut, if you will. So here our options are. So our options, and I'll read them to you again, because I don't know if I can zoom any farther on that, but, let's see. That might be a little bit better. Again, so very first one, reducing ending fund balance to 6.6% of expenditures, that would be the 360 that we're talking about there. After that, reducing capital fund transfer, and if you remember, we were talking about reducing it by 50% at the workshop, and we took that off the table. So any value of that, or any portion of that. Again, eliminating the budget for the grant match in the general government, in the, in the, in the general fund, and that sits within the management services budget. Not filling the vacant property evidence tech position, or the resulting dispatch vacancy within the police department. And another one within the police department of eliminating the, the budget for the grant match in the fire department, not filling the vacant firefighter position, and in the parks and recreation, not filling the vacant rec specialist. And then the bottom one is increasing the transfer from the, from the development services fund into the general fund to repay that subsidy that had happened a couple of years back, and increasing that amount. Right now, with the 352,000 that's proposed for this next fiscal year, we're, we're projecting that they'll have an ending fund balance next year of about $700,000. So we probably could increase that. So those are the items that were left off the table from last time.
So you could do away with the 352 to the development services fund?
Well, you would, you would double it, if, if you're looking for that nexus of the same amount. Right now, we have built into the city manager's recommendation 352,000.
Right.
I could double that, or just take the, the remaining 360 as an example.
Okay. Question, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, you know, Jeff, I, I am concerned the direction we're going, because I think that the council reached an agreement at the retreat, and then new things pop into this, money's been moved around, and we really haven't talked about the real problem in the room, and that is, we all know that we have a million-dollar bust copping up, you know, we're in arbitration, and we lose that, that arbitration, where are we going to take that million dollars from if we've taken our ending fund balance dangerously low?
Agreed.
So we need to have a contingency here. I think it, I know I've been harping on the ending fund balance for years, but you take the ending fund balance to 6.6, like you say. Everything we've done for cutting 2.5 million this year is one-time money, it's nothing long-term. Where's the million dollar going to come from if we hit that bust next year?
Part of, if I, if I could, part of that is going to be what the process innovation is all about. We are going to build that into our culture. How quickly can we get those kinds of savings? I don't know yet, you know?
And I'd much rather go and say, well, let's don't make any cuts at all, let's go to project innovation, and let's find $2 million, 2.5 million in project innovation, and we'll speed that process along pretty quickly. I mean, I, I think you're giving up everything here. You, you've, you've laid all your cards on the table, you, you gave away all one-time money, you, you got recurring costs that are going on up, and you have a, a nightmare sitting out there, ready to go, to, to come and bite you. You have, I mean, I, I think it's very poor planning to think that we're going to get, if we're going to get a million, 2 million, 2.5, depending on what that final number comes out to be, through project innovation, we better get started on it right now. And I think we're going in the wrong direction here. I think we've, we've, we're, you know, bringing the ending fund balance that low, no company would do this, no company.
Mr. Lawson.
Well, my, my comment is to just double up the, the contribution from the department, development services, and let's move down the road. So vital, we need to address this quarterly, because it is going to be a moving target.
Yes, and that's a...
All this, we're trying to get to is a final budget at this point. I think that's the fast, easy, simple way to do it. Yeah, we're going to get hit with that $2 million, or whatever it is. I mean, we're going to have to decide then, whether it's layoffs or cutting more services, I don't know.
Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, I have no, what you said is projected ending fund balance to 7%, isn't that right? Without doing anything right now?
7.3, and then taking the two pennies off would take us down to 6.6.
I have no problem with that, because I think with, this is so fluid, it'll change, I guarantee you. And also, you know, transferring the money from the other fund, that's there, if we need it, we can make, that's our internal, that's an internal policy, we should take it when we need it.
Yes, we could.
Because I think that community services is going to have to take a look, because I think that's some of our temporary workers. So that's a decision we're going to have to make down the road. I don't have a problem with, you know, putting in the, the budget as it stands right now that we just voted for, and with all that, just leave that right where it is, and, and we know that we could go back to it. Because like I said, most of it's internal. And we also have some, well, I won't go there, but we're, yeah, okay.
Ms. Ratty.
We already voted on it, right?
Yep.
Okay. So what else, what other motion we're going to make? Somebody going to make a motion to take some more money?
Let's hear from Julia first.
And shift it? Well, I'd like to know what everybody's thinking.
Go ahead, Julia.
So I, could you just repeat, what's the projected ending fund balance on the development services fund?
About 700,000.
700,000. So even with that said, I tend to agree with Mike, that that money's there, and we can, we can choose to transfer it at any point in time during the year, if we want to avoid layoffs or do something along those lines. I just have to say it, I have to care, I mean, I appreciate the characterization as everything is one-time money. I would agree with that, except for property taxes, because you only raise them once, but then it does recur, year after year after year.
Exactly.
But I lost that one, so I'll move on, and I would say, let's not, let's not, I mean, I'm perfectly fine with the ending at the, ending fund balance, because it's going to be fluid. I mean, I, once again, completely agree with Mike Carrigan.
Somebody write that down.
Yikes. What's the date, Mr. Schmidt?
And my, my question, and, you know, I'm, I'm okay being wrong on this, everybody disagrees with me, is that you did a budget, did a vote on a budget that calls for an ending fund balance of 7.3%, correct?
Yes.
You don't have that now.
Correct. I'd be moving, I'd be moving our budget to a 6.6% if, if nothing changes.
So the vote is nonvalid, because you just changed it.
I'm sorry?
You just overrode the council, and that's my, that's my point here, is that, you know, we, we did a vote, I lost 4-1 on the vote, the vote said that it would be 7.3. These folks voted on a budget that said 7.3. You overrode the council, and said, we're going to go to 6.6 now. That's, I have a problem with that, that you can't change the council's vote, if the council said it would be 7.3 ending fund balance, that's what it should be, until the council says, I changed that, and go to 6.6.
If, if I could, I think you did, though, with the motion on the, on number two, by taking out the, so we, we had a council motion at, on that number one, of the city manager's recommendations, and then the second one was not to approve that 2% or 2 pennies of the property tax, thus changing...
And I didn't hear that in the motion, that we weren't going to approve the, the two cents property tax, we were going to change the ending fund balance to 6.6. I did not hear that in the motion. I did not hear where the other 360,000 was going to come from.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I did, somebody made that motion, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Mr. Smith.
I don't think anybody made the motion, but, but I can agree with the 6.6, because we've been lower than that before. I would ask Chet if we need to make another motion to change it.
Mr. Carrigan.
Well, I think that, I think what, well, I want, because I was going to solve it, temper it in there.
Please, solve it.
Well, I was going to solve it, because, you know, when we were at the retreat, there were votes, you know, well, I shouldn't say that, there was an inclination that we were going to raise property tax, and since we voted that down today, then we have to take another, another action. So if we need to get it on the record, then I'll vote, I make a motion that we reduce the ending fund balance to 6.6% to make up for the two cents property tax that was declined.
Okay.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Motion by Mr. Carrigan, seconded by Ms. Ratty, to lower the fund balance to 6.6 to offset the two cents of property tax that we had approved before. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed 4-1, Mr. Schmidt, no. Okay, we're going to go on to number three, but good compromise there, folks, you know, that's a tough decision either way, but you know what, bottom line, I have confidence in our financial people that they know how to budget well enough to take care of our, to take care of what happens with this 6.6. I know it's kind of low, but like Mr. Smith said, we've been lower, and we'll, we'll survive this. Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, for number three, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2013, 14 through fiscal year 17, 18.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Move by Mr. Carrigan, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve the capital, five-year capital improvement plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Jeff, good job, hang in there.
Thank you.
We'll make it. Okay, moving on to public hearings, 8.1, public hearing, second reading, discussion and possible action on CA-5-12, bill number 2656, in ordinance by the City of Sparks, amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code. Mr. Rundle, let's get ready to rundle. Go ahead, Jim.
Good afternoon. I'm Rundle, senior planner, here to present the code amendment as introduced by the mayor. A while back, a citizen approached Councilman Smith and asked why they were limited to five residents when they wanted to do adult care in their home. After research, staff identified that, we believe when the permitted use was added in 1990, we speculate that the reason it was limited to five people was because of fire codes. Essentially, fire codes limit it, limit it currently at five people unless you want to have residential fire sprinklers in your, in your home. Staff has proposed to the planning commission, which forwarded a recommendation of approval to the council, that the five, the limitation of five residents be removed as long as the homeowner complies with all of the state codes, and then the local fire and building codes. The local fire codes would require that they install residential fire sprinklers. So essentially, we're proposing that the code be amended to remove the limitation of five residents, and that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Jim. Questions for Mr. Rundle? Okay, seeing no questions, this is a public hearing, so open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Mr. Smith.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt bill number 2656, amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to permit more than five residents receiving adult care in a residential district when permitted by building and fire codes and other matters property-related thereto.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve agenda item 8.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next is 8.2, consideration possible action regarding the planning commission's approval of PCN 12022, a special use permit, to request for a 201-room hotel casino. Who's doing this, Mr.? Mr. Lawson?
Well, I don't know if we need to go through all the presentation, but I spent a lot of time in the last two weeks talking with the applicant, talking with staff. I'm still not entirely happy about the way the project is laid out, but in, in the spirit of compromise, I'm going to withdraw my appeal on this item.
Okay. Do we need a vote or anything, Chet, or is it just no public hearing, anything, we're good to go?
Deny.
Okay. So Mr. Lawson has withdrawn his appeal, which means that the project is approved. Okay? Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it. Sorry you had to wait so long, but it's good news. Okay, Sean, do we need a closed-door session? No? Okay, next is comments from the, comments from the council city manager.
Mr. Carrigan.
Mr. Carrigan, go ahead.
Thank you. I do have some announcements this evening concerning some openings on our boards and commissions, and the following terms will expire on the committees of the Civil Service Commission. We will have one opening on June 30th of 2013 for a three-year term. We will also have an opening on the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority Board of Directors, that is for one member, for a four-year term, and we have the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission, we're looking for two members to fill three-year terms, and one member to fill a term which does end on June 30th of 2014. Persons who are interested in serving on any of these committees should complete a community services application available from the city clerk's office here at the City of Sparks. You may also apply online at the city's website, City of Sparks, www.cityofsparks.us. Simply click on governing on the webpage, then click to boards, commissions, and get involved, then click on our community services application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, May 31st, 2013, at which time they will be forwarded to the mayor for his review, and further on to the city council for their action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay, next is comments from the public, I have one to speak, Mr. Don Young.
Thank you, Ms. Ratty. Again, Happy Earth Day, council members and others. Knowing that I would be coming down here today, a couple of park rangers asked me to mention that the dog park is falling apart. This is at the marina. The gates are broken, and whole fence sections have fallen out, and the condition of the south restrooms are deplorable. My last clam went, goes back quite a few years prior to the legends breaking ground. At a neighborhood meeting at the long-gone Jib, city manager Kerry promised us a no-outlet sign at the bridge on Hubbard Cove Drive. This is just a gentle reminder, because it's not there yet. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no for the bus, oops. Public comment?
Public comment, please.
Sure, come on down. Just fill out a card when you're done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name's Steve Polakalis. On behalf of the Pepper Mill, the John Swagis Nugget, as well as the Atlantis Resort Casino, we made an appearance during the last council meeting on April 8th, 2013, regarding the appeal of Councilman Lawson on item 8.2, which was just withdrawn. thirteen regarding the appeal of Councilman Lawson on item eight-two, which was just withdrawn. I just, I wanted to say, we appreciate the ability of getting further information with respect to this, this project and the special use permit. I think my clients, as well as, as well as the NRA disagree as to the definition of resort casino as is being implemented here. Hopefully, that'll be further vetted somewhere down the road. We had asked, in a letter that I authored to the city attorney's office this week, that perhaps this body may refer the item back to regional planning, or to the Planning Commission for further analysis of it. Anyway, I would just ask that that letter be made part of the public record, and, and we appreciate this issue, and as I said in that letter, this isn't to prevent anyone from creating a resort hotel, as we deem the definition to be prescribed under NRS, as well as the Sparks City Ordinance. We're just concerned about a slippery slope that can be created when we're combining hotels to meet the two-hundred-and-one-room hotel requirement for unrestricted gaming. So, having said that...
Thanks, Steve. I have the letter here, I'll give it to the clerk.
Thank you very much.
And enter it into the public record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else under public comment? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Hey, Steve? Make sure you fill out your comment card. Thank you.
Ready, Teresa? Okay. Call the order of Sparks Redevelopment Agency for April twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen, with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency members, Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Manager Kerry?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
And Agency Secretary Gardner. We have a forum.
Okay, I'll open it up to public comment. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did somebody have some discussion over there?
Yes.
I want to know who had motion and seconded.
Okay, did you get those?
It was the mayor and Lawson.
Okay.[1675.42]